Let us pray. Father, we come before you one more time, Father, giving you thanks and give you praise for allowing us to wake up this morning, to be able to assemble here, to represent the people that you have placed us in, in representation of, Father God. Father, we accept the decisions that are made here today that are decisions that are pleasing in your sight, we ask that you continue to bless Central Texas College, the state of Texas, and this nation, Father. Bless those that are in leadership and continue to give them strength and wisdom to make decisions that are pleasing unto you. It is in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
The pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please follow me in honoring the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Amen.
First item of business is to approve the minutes of the November 19th meeting. Motion to approve is published. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions, additions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Amen. Item three, opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board, suggest items of interest and topics. Eddie?
Thank you very much. Now the chancellor's report.
First, I'd like to share with you a couple of promotions, and they are internal promotions, which is always nice. We have Dr. Catherine Oser and Ms. Tracy Martin with us today, and I'll introduce Dr. Oser first. A graduate of Central Texas College, Dr. Catherine Oser began her career as a tutor in computer science before becoming a professor. There was a progression there. In the meantime, Dr. Oser obtained a Bachelor of Science in Computer Information Systems from Charleston State University, a Master's of Science in Management Information Systems from Texas A&amp;M University, Central Texas, and a doctorate in Leadership and Educational Administration from the University of Mary Harden Baylor, along with certifications in cloud computing and learning disabilities. Dr. Oser has served on numerous CTC and statewide committees. In 2014, she became, she was appointed Department Chair of Computer Information Technology and Systems, and last month she was appointed to the position of Dean, Workforce Education, Academic Outreach, and Lifelong Learning. And our message to her is pace yourself, because she's trying to do everything right now. And she has had, she's already had a tremendous impact in that area. Dr. Oser, would you please come forward?
I wrote this, and then I decided I was going to shorten it, but then Ms. Martin told me that we're a team, and we gotta, we gotta read the thing. So I'm a little nervous, but it's truly a privilege to be here before you. And I'm gonna try not to cry. Sorry.
Go ahead. Do you have permission?
I've been here 20 years, and I'm completely, I'm sorry, I'm going off script. I'm homegrown. I started here. I grew up here. CTC is my foundation, and I'm inspired every day to change lives through education. I mean, this is a personal mission of my own, happens to be an extension of the missions of the college. And the opportunity to become the dean just expands, it gives me more chance to exercise that opportunity and serve our community in the best way possible. And I thank you all for that.
Thank you.
Sorry.
You're fine. Don't apologize.
She raises good chickens, too.
Sorry.
So in true Dr. Oser fashion, when she vacated her position, she was already succession planning. Ms. Tracy Martin graduated from the University of Mary Harden Baylor in 2013 with a Master's of Science degree in Information Systems. In January 2014, she joined Central Texas College as a professor in our Computer Information Technology and System Department until her recent appointment to Department Chair of said department earlier this month on December 2nd. Please welcome Ms. Tracy Martin.
Thank you. I'm gonna read mine, because I wrote it, I want y'all to know. Good afternoon to Chancellor Dr. Michelle Carter, Vice Chancellors, and the CTC Board Members. It is my pleasure to stand before you today to say thank you for the promotion given to me as Department Chair for the Computer Information Technology and Systems Department. I considered it an honor and a privilege to serve as a leader of this great college. When I started here in January of 2014, I wanted to spread my knowledge and skills to others to help them achieve their goals. The first graduation I attended in 2014, I was so excited to watch some of my students, because I consider them my students. And so I was like, I'm so excited to watch them walk across that stage, and I, and to know that I played a part, a valuable part, in their education. That motivated me to do more and to continue pouring into my students. I have thoroughly enjoyed working at CTC, and I can't wait to embark on this new adventure as Department Chair. Our previous Department Chair, Dr. Oser, was a great example, and I intend to continue the reputation she's built for our department. We are family, and I will continue to keep that sense of family and support for each other. Our department will work hard to be on the cutting edge of technology and bring the best education to each and every one of our students that walk through our classroom doors. So with that being said, I want to personally thank everyone that took part in preparing me for this position, Chancellor Dr. Michelle Carter, Board Members. Some of you have no idea, but I've watched you. I've watched your leaderships, leadership skills, and how you stood tall in your beliefs that CTC will be the college that provides accessible, equitable, and quality educational opportunities that promote student success, completion, and employability to all of our students, whether near or far. So I want to say again, thank you for the opportunity to be a vital part of the CTC leadership team.
Yeah, we're gonna try.
When, last, last year, I spoke to the faculty, and I shared with them that I was willing to come to their classrooms if they invited me. Ms. Martin invited me, and I attended one of her classes, and it was a class, I don't remember the name of the class, but there were adult learners and dual-credit students. Remember, we've always told you that with early college, high school, and the STEM program, they're all together, there are no cohorts. And I watched her manage this very diverse classroom, generational diversity, if you will. And she was amazing. The students had no idea who I was, sitting there in the corner, so what I got to see was genuine, it was very authentic, and the students were really enjoying the lesson and the activities. So, thank you, Ms. Martin. Good luck. Next, four technicians of tomorrow. You all remember, a few years ago, we partnered with Transition Assistance Services to stand up the Four Technicians of Tomorrow program. Unfortunately, the, it's a wonderful program, but as with any contract, you know, we're not in it to lose money. And so there were some minimum, minimum student numbers that we needed to achieve for each cohort, and it was difficult for our partner to, to maintain those recruitment numbers. And so we weren't covering all of our costs. And so we, after some conversations, it was determined that we would end the contract, we both agreed. Also, the, this is a, this is a transition program, one of the transition programs on Fort Cabazos, of course, we provide the instruction on our campus. But another, another issue for the program is that General Motors has a program on Fort Cabazos, and it is free. So those same soldiers are eligible for that program, and it's, it's difficult to compete with free sometimes, right? Business Resource Center MOU, earlier this month, earlier this fiscal year, when you approved your sponsorship allocations, the Business Resource Center, the $30,000 allocation was included. Well, the, the MOU ends in January, and in the last several years, we have always renewed it. Well, after, after evaluating the performance this year, we've decided, all three entities, the Chamber, as well as the Workforce Solutions, we've collectively decided not to renew the contract. We pay, you will recall, we paid $30,000, and each of them pays $35,000, and the Chamber actually hires the employees. However, I will tell you that we are all committed, though, to continuing with support to small businesses and entrepreneurs. It will just, it will look different, so those are the conversations that we're having right now, and the Chamber is taking the, the lead on that. So it's not that the support is going away, it's the structure in which we do it. So also to let you know, the, we made an initial payment of $15,000, not a full $30,000, so we still have the other half. Prison Education Program. So the administration, we're currently pursuing the designation of our Gatesville Prison Program as a Department of Education Prison Education Program, and if approved, individuals incarcerated at this location who meet certain criteria, of course, will be eligible for Pell funding, Pell Grant funding, and that's huge. So at this time, I'd like for Dr. Garrett to come forward and just talk about our progression through this process and what the next steps are.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. The, to get approval with the Department of Ed to offer courses funded through Pell has been a long process, and we're, we're almost to the, the finish line with it. We had to get approval and get letters of support from the actual prison system. We had to get SACS approval, which was quite a haul. To their credit, they wanted to be sure that what we submit to the Department of Ed for Pell approval was very, very accurate, to the point where if I left off an S with, on something, we had to resubmit. So it was, it was quite a haul getting that approved, but I'm happy to say that we did receive approval from SACS for all four locations and the programs that were requested by the Gatesville Prison System, so that we should be able to offer those through Pell once now we get approval from the Department of Ed. So that's the next step. My financial aid team is working on the application right now. What it amounts to is getting approval, since we, as an institution, are allowed to offer Pell. It's a matter of getting approval for those loca, those four locations and the degrees that were approved for those locations and certificates. So once we get that approval, then we'll be able to start offering Pell to the prisoners at Gatesville Prison.
All right. I started to title this next bullet, Austin update, but I went ahead and spelled it out. The Coordinating Board, the TAC Office, and a legislative update, and I'll start with the, with the Coordinating Board. On yesterday, the Community College Presidents and Chancellors, we, we had an introductory meeting with the new Coordinating Board Commissioner, Dr. Win Roser, and it was a wonderful, wonderful one-hour conversation with him. He is a product of community colleges. He graduated from Kilgore, and he believes in the mission of community colleges and has already done quite a bit of work in his previous life with different foundations in, in supporting the work of, of, of community colleges, establishing pathways for students to a better life. So he, he understands our language, he understands our mission, fielded several questions, he let us know that we were his, the first group that he was actually meeting with. His focus obviously will be the 89th Legislative Session coming up, but he is absolutely open to hearing more from us, hearing our questions. He made note of several questions, very humble. What he didn't know, he didn't try to answer, he just made a note of it, and what he did know, he was willing to share. So very, very pleased with that selection. Also, the Coordinating Board released the request for application for the Nursing Shortage Reduction Program for fiscal year 25 grant cycle. This grant supports institutional initiatives that enhance the capacity of nursing education programs in Texas with the goal of increasing enrollment, retention, and graduation rates for nursing students. So Dr. Clooney and her team are currently preparing our application, which we will submit, I believe, this month, right? Legislative priorities under TAC. So Texas Association of Community Colleges, there are lots of things that we're looking at, but the three primary legislative priorities for this session include supplemental appropriations to the original request that will help us sustain what we're doing in serving our students, formula funding for fiscal year 26, '27, just ensuring that we have the funding that we need to meet the evolving needs of our students. This is the second year of House, of House Bill 8, this particular funding model, so we are still learning quite a bit. And then the third legislative priority is inclusion of private institutions in the performance tier funding. So you, you've heard previously that one level of award is the transfer from, so, from a community college to the four-year. And currently, that four-year has to be a public institution, but as we know, students go off to schools such as University of Mary Harden Baylor and others. So one of the things that we would like to see is the inclusion of those private universities, as well as the independent universities that students are attending, so that we can receive the, the, that performance award level of funding. And then legislative updates. So to date, what it, this is periodically I'll come back, Mrs. Briggs and I, we may tag team on this, but as you know, we don't, we closed that office, we eliminated a, a position, but I wanted to assure you that we are tracking the, this session. And so Ms. Briggs has already set up a track, a tracker for all things higher education and a couple of other special interest items for our staff. To date, 2,234 bills have been filed for consideration, and you know, filing will continue through, I think it's March. Right? So, so we are on top of that, and then, of course, we have resources in the Texas Association of School Boards, Texas Association of Community Colleges, as well as the Texas Association of Community College Attorneys, which Ms. Briggs is a member of. So. And finally, Service Award Ceremony. The annual Service Award Ceremony is scheduled for this Friday, December 20th, at 8:30. We do have a social at 7:30, so if you're able to come, we would love to have you there. We have a seat just for you. I said 7:30, you should, did you see their faces? We will have coffee. And that concludes my update, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone have questions, comments about the chancellor's report?
Come in. I want to go back to Dr. Oser and Ms. Martin. If every student could have access to what you just delivered, it would be amazing. I'm very proud of both of you. Congratulations. Your heart, your, your energy, your desire to do well was just laid out, and I'm glad, Ms. Martin, you read yours, because we could see, I could see how you felt, and yours, Dr. Oser, yours showed in your emotion. But thank you, thank you, guys, for what you did. In my life, I have run, run across a couple of you, but you know, it's like a poster that I gave my husband one time that says about eagles. You don't find them in a group, you find them one at a time. And I just wanted to say that I think of you, I will think of you guys as real eagles. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Brenda.
Dr. Carter, the legislative update, I know that you, both of you are working on it, will you just, if possible, at every meeting, particular workshop, whichever you choose, would you just let us know that there is, are some new updates, or there's nothing to report?
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I had just had a question about the Four Technicians of Tomorrow. Is there any further planning on that, or is it just going to be terminated?
The, the agreement has terminated.
Have you all thought about approaching CCSI, no, I'm sorry, the Ford people, and see if they can offer the same type of program as General Motors is, but offer for KISD and CCSI graduates who would like to go into that program?
I will reach out to them. I have sent a communication to them with, because in this particular instance, the, the middle person is the Transition Assistance Services, but I have reached out to their, the Ford representative to let them know that we are open.
That sounds like might be a good idea.
Yeah, I like that.
I know these 18-year-olds would probably love to get some good automotive training.
Sure. Good, good point, sir. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Item five is to discuss, consider approval of the annual financial report. Mr. Lake?
Chancellor Carter, members of the board, Lotburn and the company has completed their audit of your financial statements for 2024. I remind you, it contains three opinion letters, the first of which deals with the formation of the financial statements that you see before you. It is an unmodified opinion with no material weakness or findings. The other two I will go over later with the compliance side. Real quickly, let's do some, some of my favorite variation analysis of the balance sheet and income statement. I have included in your packet a three-page summary, I like to refer to as the cheat sheet, if you want to follow along with that instead of the book, it would probably be a lot easier. On page 12 of your AFR, you have your statement of net position for fiscal year 2024. Indicator number one on your summary is total assets, 276.8 million this fiscal year, up $4 million over last year. Your cash and investments are up about $1 million over last year, and then.
Excuse me, what page are you?
If you're in the AFR, it's on page 12. There is a three-page summary, the staple summary, if you, it would be page one of Indicator number two is your accounts receivable at 15.7 million, and it is up $750,000 with your increase in tuition and rates for this fiscal year. Before I leave AR, I have a quick update on AR as it relates to last year. So when we were going through our testing of AR and tuition revenue, we could not get the variation analysis to come out. So with the help of Brenda Thompson, we went back and looked at between the two years, between your tuition revenue in '23 and '24, and we had a $3.4 million restatement of prior year AR. So when you look across the column there at that 14.9, that is not what it was last, last year when I presented. So we do have a restatement this year of AR. It has increased your net position by 3.4 million in '23, and also increased your accounts receivable for '23. As GASB 100 states, which was in, in effect this year, anytime you have a restatement or correction, I have to correct it in every single number, whether it's a footnote schedule or whatever in the whole AFR, and that has been done. So when you look at the schedules at the back, the footnotes, that change has been made throughout the whole AFR document. Any questions on that before I go? If you need more detail on it, there is a note disclosure of that on page 20 of the The other increase in assets is indicator number three, your capital assets at 138.2 million. It is up $2 million over last year. You added 7.1 million to your fixed assets during the fiscal year, net of 5.1 and depreciation. Indicator number four is your liabilities, total liabilities, 98, 94.8 million, down 1.6 million over last year. A couple of increases, indicator number five, your accounts payable at 5.2 million is up 1.7 million, 1.6 million, that is the Braun and Butler Construction Programs or Indicator number six, the first item in indicator number six is your net position at 18.9 million. That is up $1 million over last year with the actuaries calculation. And then the number below that, that is our significant decrease in liabilities, and that is your OPEB liability at 37.5 million, is down 4.4 million over last year. The discount rate for OPEB, as it relates to the rate of return, went from 3.51, or 3.59 to 3.81. Anytime that ratio goes up, your liability goes down, and I saw this at every single community college. Indicator number seven is your net position, 164 million for this fiscal year, up $9 million or 5.8% over last year. As always, from a reserve perspective of fund accounting, if you will, if I dare to say that, perspective, I'd like to take GASB 68 and 75 out of the equation, which would be the pension and OPEB calculations. So when I do that, your total net position grows from 164 million to 239.1 million. And then the unrestricted number, that indicator number eight, at 24.4 million, your unrestricted net position grows to 99.5 million, and that represents 13.6 months worth of operating expenditures. So as a reserve of a old-school reserve, that's, that's, that's a very strong position for your balance sheet. Any questions on the balance sheet?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The OPEB, the reducing, and the liability debt also gives us a better rate for our insurance also, right?
Correct.
So we're, we're gonna look at a, hopefully, a reduction in our insurance liability.
You, you hope that liability continues to go down, you know, the main reason for that rate of return, obviously, discount rate going up is because of the interest rates.
Correct.
The one that needs to go down is the health cost trend rate.
Health costs.
And when the health cost trend rate goes down, it goes, or when, when that rate goes down, this liability tremendously goes down.
Thank you.
Any other question? If you flip the page in the summary to the statement of revenues and expenses, or if you're following along in the AFR, it's page 14. Total operating revenues, indicator number one, 38.1 million for this fiscal year, up 5.5 million or 17% over last year. Your biggest increase is tuition and fees at 28.9 million, is up 6.8 million. Again, that's after I made the change from last year. So still a very significant increase. I went back and looked, you know, because we've always talked about tuition rate, tuition's going down, leveling off, going down. So back in 2019, you had 33 and a half million in tuition as it related to the Texas campus. So as of now, for 2024, this is the first year you've received a significant increase in tuition since that date. And so that is a very, very good thing, so. Then your federal grants and contracts, indicator number three, the only, you know, significant decline, at 3.2 million, it's down about $1 million. We did have over $500,000 in a true grant last year, kind of related to COVID. It still exists, but it's a very small amount, and it's, it's considered a state revenue instead of a federal revenue to date. Total operating expenses, indicator number four, at 87.5 million, is up 4.3 million or 5% over last year. A lot of variation here. The main decrease you have across all departments, salary and benefits are down about 6.4 million. Then you have some increases in institutional support, indicator number five. That is up 1.4 million over last year, primarily due to the GASB 68 and 75 accrual entries. Indicator number six, your scholarships and fellowships at 22 million is up 5 million over last year. Again, that's with the tuition increase, and as I'll speak of later, you had a. Again, that's with the tuition increase, and as I'll speak of later, you had a, a pretty large increase in Pell grant income, so that's why that expense is up. Depreciation, indicator number seven, at 5.1 million, is up 1.4 million over last year. Again, we added leases and subscriptions and all that kind of stuff last year and the year before. So that is going to continue to go up and level off as it has amortization expense attached to it, along with depreciation. And then other random variances, your continuing ed is up almost a half million with your truck driving program. And then insurance expense, went back and looked at it, it is up over a million dollars over last year. I'm seeing that trend at a lot of colleges as it relates to the renewal rates. Non-operating revenues is indicator number eight, 58.3 million is up 8.8 million over last year, 17.6%. Your state appropriations, indicator number nine, is up 2.6 million over last year. Indicator number 10, your federal revenue at 17.9 million is up 3.8 million. Again, that's, your Pell alone was increased by 4 million this fiscal year. And then investment income, number 11, at 5.2 million, is up 2.1 million, because you're actually making money on your investments now. With all that being said, indicator number 12, nine, right at $9 million, and that is your 5.8% increase in net position. Any questions on revenues and expenses? As I alluded to earlier, there's two other opinion letters related to compliance. Again, the next page in the summary, or page 63 in the AFR. These deal with the internal controls and the state and federal programs. The first opinion letter deals with internal controls as it relates to the financial statements. It is a unmodified or clean opinion with no findings. The second opinion letter deals with the compliance as it relates to both state and federal programs. It is unmodified or clean opinion with no findings. And then you see there, item number seven identifies those major programs. On the federal side, we're, we're back to student financial aid. We don't have COVID money anymore, so we're not having to audit that as major. And then over on the state side, you see it was TEOG for this fiscal year. As a result of all that testing, all of this goes into the data collection form at the fed level. Indicator number 10 and 11 there, those are the primary goal of this whole, whole section, and that is to qualify as a low-risk audit for both federal and state, and that answers yes on both, of both cases. Any questions on compliance? I don't have any questions on that. You should have a staple document I refer to as the management letter. This letter is separate from the audit. It is a required question and answer session for me, the auditor, to, to the board, or the audit committee, if you have one. Everything in the front of this, this is of a positive nature. In the middle of page one, the only thing I'll note, the only accounting change was that GASB 100. We already talked about that, about correcting all, all changes throughout the document, whether they be prior year or current year, and that has been done. The rest of the answers and questions, question and answer is of a positive nature. We didn't have to get legal involved, no, no counsel, things of that nature. Then on the very last page of the report, it offers opportunity for me, the auditor, if I see insignificant, if it was significant, it would be a finding in the audit. If I see insignificant weaknesses noted, that I can communicate this to the board in the hopes that it doesn't become a finding later on in the audit, growing into more of a large control risk problem. So we do have one comment back there. Again, I, I alluded to the state side. We did audit TEOG as a major program this year. And so when we first came in and audited TEOG, we noted that there was an over award, possible over award for TEOG. Now, to give you a little background on TEOG, you can come back, it is allowed at the end of the year to reallocate your TEOG funds if you happen to have awarded too many or too less. And so we noted around 360,000 over awards in TEOG. The majority of those, in fact, predominantly all of that was able to be reallocated. So you do not have a finding. So when you look at the state federal fund schedule, it is correct. It shows 1.1 million of, of TEOG funds, and that was awarded to the college. When we first came in, that number was larger. It was over the actual award amount, and you reallocated some of those funds to eligible programs to stay in compliance with TEOG. So my recommendation is just to reconcile this more on a periodic basis, so that that reallocation at year-end is not so large. You know, it's always going to be a little, just to do it on a more frequent basis, so that year-end, it's, it's a, it's an insignificant amount of, of reallocation. Any questions on that?
I've just got a, a recommendation, Chairman, that, on that Texas Education Opportunity Grant, let's have our internal auditor give us a report back, say, the first meeting in April, to see if we're on track, and any, anything that needs to be corrected that's been taken care of.
Any other questions? Then I present this for your approval.
Thank you for your preciseness and your quality. Any questions to add to Mr. Lake's report? Is there a motion to approve?
Some moves?
Second.
Motion been made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item six, work contract in support of automotive training projects.
Good afternoon. You'll recall that last month, I was before you, telling you about the grants, both our automotive and welding programs received for new equipment. I'm at, asking if we may spend that money. Let me remind you exactly with, with, let me remind you about what we're looking at purchasing. Hybrid vehicle and engine trainers, along with some gearship trainers and hydraulic trainers as well for our automotive program. That contract, or those two contracts, won't exceed 103, 103,713. And then the second area was for welding, for the welding table. That amount for the water jet table.
They're separate items.
Oh, I apologize.
I'm sorry I didn't tell you.
Apologize. So I'm just going to stop. And ask for your approval to make those automotive purchases. Again, that's for EV vehicles and trainers. The, I, I can't even say the future, it's the now, to bring our, our programs up to date with industry.
Item six. Did you make motion? Motion been made, is there a second? Second. Motion been made in second. Any discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now you can go to the next person.
Alrighty. So this next item is about the welding equipment. This is for the water jet table, which includes all the equipment that comes with the water jet table and the software. Again, this equipment is to bring us into today's industry market. Those items will be purchased at the price of 157,366. Does include training and backup training.
Questions? Is there a motion?
So.
Okay. Go ahead.
For item number seven, why wasn't none of it included in our packet?
Item nine.
Because I have the one.
It's all in one document, sir.
So it's all in the same one?
It's all in, yeah.
Okay, got it.
And I will just.
I just wanted to make sure.
No, no worries.
That's good.
This comes from an inexperienced asker for money. Except when it comes to HR.
Not everybody asks.
Not everybody asks for money with a smile.
We learn as we go. No one's perfect.
Okay, other questions, comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make it.
Motion been made, is there a second?
Sorry.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Bassin, you have a recommendation for a foundation board member?
I do. Good afternoon, Chancellor Carter, Chairman Towers, and Board of Trustees. On behalf of the CTC Foundation Board, I present a nominee for membership for the CTC Foundation Board. The candidate has been, has completed a nomination application and was submitted to the nomination chair, Dr. Jim Anderson. The applications were then provided to the nomination committee for review and approval. The approval from the nomination committee was then submitted to the CTC Foundation Board for approval. At the last CTC Foundation Board meeting held on Thursday, November 21st, 2024, the board approved the nomination, nominee as presented. The nominee is Mr. Mark Price. Mr. Price is the founder pastor of Covenant Life Church in Killeen, Texas, and has over 40 years of leadership experience. Mark has served in multiple pastoral roles and has also worked as a manager in the business sector. Mark has served on the Chamber of Commerce, healthcare, and nonprofit boards. Mark believes developing strong relationships within the community is the foundation for everyone's success in your personal and professional life. "Great leaders learn from other great leaders," was quoted by Mr. Mark Price. I thank you for providing me the opportunity to present Mr. Mark Price to you on behalf of the CTC Foundation Board. We believe he will be an asset to our board, and I ask at this time if anyone has any questions about the nominee.
I would make an observation. I spoke to Pastor Mark this morning to see if he was going to be at the board meeting today, and he chose to go visit his grandson instead.
He said it was in good hands, you know, I was going to present for him.
Any other question? Is there a motion to approve? Motion been made in second. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Time to recommend any topics for upcoming agenda items. Ms. Jordan, thank you for reminding me that you're next.
I would agree.
Maybe that's why I skipped it.
Okay, good afternoon. I am here this afternoon to request your approval. We need to do an internal transfer in HR. We've identified some HR expenses, and we need to transfer some funds internally. Generally, we wouldn't come to you with this request, with the internal transfer, but the dollar amount is such, we decided to request your approval.
To blame us for it.
Any questions about this recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll try not to forget you next time. Now, recommend any topics for upcoming agenda items or announcements by board members. Mr. Wilkerson?
Just one quick thing is prayers for Pete Taylor and his family. I know it's been a couple of weeks, but they, they're still going through it. And Pete Taylor was, was a great member of our community, did a lot of great things, volunteered dearly in our community. Just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and continue to love and care for one another, and let's not be divided, let's be unified. Thank you.
Just a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everybody, and hope to see you back here in January.
I like the Merry Christmas and Happy New Year vote.
I received a message yesterday, day before, must, yeah, it must have been yesterday. I don't know who it was from. I suspect it was a Bible study teacher in another church. Told me the story of his wife, the Bible study teacher's member. A woman said that she was concerned about getting her husband to go to the CTC graduation for their daughter, because her husband has some issues of crowd and that sort of thing, and it was quite a, a burden for both of them. And the message that she gave her Bible study teacher and said to me was, when he got there and looked up and saw Mr. Wilkinson, and, and Mr. Weaver, and Mr. Towers on the podium, he felt comfortable. I don't know what that meant, but thank you, guys, for making people feel comfortable. Anybody else? Anything else? I too wish you Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And I do remember that we have an executive session to plan for in January from Dr. Gary. Any other announcements? Location of the workshop in January on the 21st at 1:00 p.m., the board meeting in January on the 28th at 1:00 p.m. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion been made in second. All in favor, rise.